Are you looking for quality, handcrafted, one-of-a-kind, unique items? Look no farther than Off the Square Artisans. We have over 40 artists ranging from woodworking to blacksmithing, photography, rug weaving, handmade soaps, and everything in between. If you're looking for home decor or a gift for that hard-to-shop-for friend or family member, come on into Off the Square Artisans located at 205 East High Street, one block east of the south side of the Rockville Square. Wednesday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Okay, it's time of the hour, so call meeting to order. Department head comments. Katie?
Reassessment, we're on a little hiatus. My reassessment lister is on maternity leave, but we will be in reserve township next. And we had 33 appeals this year, that's down from 89 last year. We've done all the informal appeal hearings already, 115s, which is their notice, have been sent out, and we'll go from there. Everything's good.
Nobody took it past the informal?
Huh?
You've had the informals? How many have you gone through?
I've only heard from one gentleman. He lives in Lowell, Indiana, and he wanted to do it via Zoom, and I said, "No, we can't do it via Zoom. We do them all in person." And so he may be pulling his, and he's the only one that's let me know that he wants to go, so.
Okay. Sheriff?
Year-to-date inmate billing, $140,341. Year-to-date reported collections, $52,268.16. And we had our national night out, Per Park County Night Out, last night, and it went really well.
You might, and we know what it's for, but you do have an additional in there for that national night out in our package, $8,000. That's for the pay, I assume, for some of the expenses.
Right. We got a grant for, I think, from the LCC for $8,000 of it, and we split the rest with the fair board, and then whatever was left, we paid out to commissary.
Okay. Well, it's in there. It's no problem. I just thought, since you talked about it, why? Any questions for the sheriff? Okay. Commissioner Mees?
Well, just a couple things. Sad that we, I'm sure you know we had a drowning out at Rockville Lake. I found out the, or the Next Day Channel 2 was doing a story on water safety, anyway, not necessarily tied to that. And I thought the girl did a good job, but I'm sure, I'm sure there would be some consideration for her lawsuit, like there always is, but if you've not been out there, it's just a pier, a concrete pier. There are nine concrete legs coming from the bottom, above the water, it's only about less than three feet above the water. So it's nine concrete posts, a concrete pad on top of that, there is no diving board, there was a ladder up. He simply jumped off the deck and didn't come back up. So they called 911, because it's unsupervised, of course, no light cards on. Plenty of signs saying that as you come in park as well, and once you get to the beach, big one by the beach, it's unsupervised. And they called 911. 911 responded excellently. I don't know who went, but somebody was there quickly. Chris was out weed-eating at the time, they got him, and he got there pretty quickly, too, but I'm alone, was already there. The state divers came, they found him under the pier, and he'd been down 47 minutes when they got him up, and they're getting him back. So we don't know anything, we've not seen any studies, no reports from coronary things, we don't know what the cause was for that. The board did make the decision to remove that deck. They've not had troubles with it before. They've had a few things where somebody might fall, hit their head, or they had a fight out there one time, I guess, but it's really not been a threat before. But I support whatever that board decides to do with that, and at this point, they've decided to remove that deck just to avoid that. It is outside of the rope ring. The rope ring is such that the water at the rope ring during normal water levels is about five to five-and-a-half feet deep, so it's perfectly safe, even for kids, if you're supervising your kids. So they took a ladder off that deck, and now they'll be removing it here at some point. Years and years ago, Brian Emery used to put some Christmas trees under for nesting, but they haven't done that for, what says Brian's been gone? Was that 20 years now, I suppose, for Brian, 115, long time? Community crossings paving is being done now. 275 was done. Hope they're moving to 200 now, so the community crossings will all be finished. We're doing our own paving in some spots up north, and so it's moving right along. Tim Yopin contacted me a couple days ago, he'd still like to meet about the ivy engineer. I'm still interested in that as well, and we've talked about that. As you know, we had a, I had a meeting arranged with LTAP and the two counties that do that, the two counties that share that engineer, they think it's great. They wish it was available years ago. The engineer works 10-hour days, he works two for one county, two for the other, so there's no conflict in time between the two counties. And if there is a way to arrange something together for a better price, then he can arrange those kind of things, too. So it's just something to talk about. Tim wants to meet again, so we'll get that meeting arranged. I'll let him know again today that I'm available a couple days next week, so if he wants to sit and talk, we'll do that. We're still ongoing with the planning. We'll have the road commission come together and work on the planning for the transition for the highway department superintendent, as Randy gets ready to retire next year, so we, Randy, we've asked him, and he's willing to participate in that process. This would be the time, if we or you have changes in operations, that'd be the time to do it. I'm sure Randy, too, I told him, you have some things that you would like to do differently, and you have some things that you want to keep, they think's done well, so we just all need to sit down together and figure it out, because if we're going to do that now, it's the time to do it. We would need to put those specific things in whatever kind of a job description we have for the new person that we hired coming in, so if we're going to make changes and get it set up differently, now's the time to do that, as we'll make this transition. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to do it again for another 20 years, so if we take our time to get it right and do it right, well, we should be in good shape. I think that's all I've got. I've been working on the historical marker signs around county. We have 13. I'm working on the last one now, the Mecca Turnoff. That one needed to be completely redone, down to bare metal and go from there, so I did that. I've got one more day of, takes about three hours to paint the letters on, I got one side done yesterday, got that other side in today. There is one marker left in the county that no one seems to know who's responsible for. It's on Armiesburg Road, about halfway between Ammanisuma and Armiesburg. It's to Noel Dejeunay. He was a trader, fur trader, 1700s, I think, maybe even. And they put the sign up years ago, and I thought Charlie Jones was involved with that, but he said it wasn't, so now we don't know who it is. It's in bad shape right in front of an Amish house. It's just, paint just come off. It needs a complete job, too, so I've spoken with some historical society people. It costs about 60 bucks in paint to do a, just paint, that's not time, that's just paint to redo a sign, so I think we're probably going to do that as well. If that's the case, then all of the historic markers in the county would be back to good shape. Should be good for another 10 years. It was 10 years ago that I did them before, so they lasted a long time. That's all I got.
Do you know of anything? I know the commissioners and the sheriff and the health board all were working on that one house out at Bellmore.
Yeah, I've not heard of it.
Do you know anything more? I know the health board issued the notice that it was unlivable.
Yes, they did.
So I wonder what the next step is? Do you have any, does anybody know what the next step would be, then?
No.
That they have an opportunity to clean it up, or what happens? Do you know?
I think he has a court date, but I think they do give.
Does that force them into court, then?
Right.
To deal with that?
That'd be more of a Nick question, but it looks like nothing's been done.
Well, I think you guys cited them, I believe, and then the sanitarian issued the, or the health board issued the unlivable, or what do they call that? Unhabitable?
Right.
Condition. So they did move that little camper out of there. It's gone, I don't know where it went.
I noticed that yesterday. I thought he cleaned up a little bit of stuff.
Yeah, looked like maybe he mowed a little bit.
Maybe he was taking some stuff.
Yeah, probably just moved it around, but, well, I'm glad you all are working on that, because the neighbors and all of us that live out there are just.
Windows are all boarded up still, and so.
Oh, yeah, nothing of that's been done.
I was in there years ago, and we had a complaint about it, and there was nobody in. Most of the windows were broken out, front door standing open, so I walked in the house. Somebody was living in the house, but there were goats on the stairs, and goat crap all over the stairs.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's terrible.
Yeah.
Terrible. And the neighbors, of course, all on three sides, just.
Sure.
Are livid, so, okay. All right, moving on. Stephanie?
Yes, I went to the commissioners at their last meeting and asked for an additional appropriation from the opioid funds to move $15,000 to the service contracts category, so that the money will be available when the school starts, because we think that there'll be a couple of grants for the schools, and we wanted to have that money available when that came time.
Okay, what's it for? I mean, what are, you want to move it to have it for the schools, but what's the end game here?
They want to offer a couple of programs, maybe speakers, maybe also working with the sheriff's office for Red Ribbon Week during October, to where they can bring in a speaker or offer some kind of program that's drug and alcohol-related for the kids.
That's what it was explained to us, is programming for the kids.
So some kind of anti-drug programming and/or some. How much are you expecting the grants and the B that are going to supplement this?
Well, we're not, we're not sure at this time. At our last LCC meeting, school was out. They had start, they were looking at ideas for speakers, but nothing had been set in stone yet, and they'll probably start back, you know, when school is back in, making some decisions on who they would like to bring in and that sort of thing.
And we discussed this before, before we ever set it up, in fact, in Step 2, that's the way their process works. We just didn't transfer the money to them to do with what they felt they needed at the time. They need to come with specific requests, and that's what this was for that program, so that's what that money would be used for. It's not, it's just not a white check that's set there to.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is what is the program?
Yeah.
So are both corporations involved?
Yes.
Okay. And this is intended to be a supplement to some programs that they want to do with speakers, anti-drug, anti-alcohol, whatever it is, along with some other possible grant funding opportunities to bolster that for more than what you're asking for? Is that?
Well, the opioid fund, there's, the states provided a list of eligible expenses that that money can be spent for.
Right.
So right now, that's what we've, what we've been looking at, but there's, you know, there's a great need, so for other programs and services for that money, but right now, we were, we've just focused on the schools.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Mary Ann, did you want to talk about the copier business, when we move on to that for the Plaid Office?
The Plaid Office would like to have a colored copier. The copier they have now, the lease on it expires February the 27th. They wanted it now, and to do a buyout, it's going to cost us over $2,000 for the buyout. The commissioners have already told them they thought they could wait until February.
I was just going to say, they're wanting to use mine, and it's just walking through the door, and mine isn't.
And they can use ours, and I think the veterans' office has a colored computer, a copier.
And they're hooked to where they can print directly to mine.
We didn't see, we didn't spend $2,000.
I was asked about this a long time ago.
We don't either.
Punished it to the commissioners, because this is really their decision more than it is ours, and Mary Ann did the legwork and found out that it's an extra couple thousand dollars to do it early, and I informed them it's not worth $2,000 to pay to do it early, and they were both fine with it, so.
So we're just waiting to get them one when?
We'll get, if the commissioners choose to want to give them that when they, when the contracts do, then so be it. That's, that's, that's between them, but for $2,000 to do it eight months early, I don't see any reason.
Especially when they can use, because these copier, it's all one big contract, so the copiers belong to.
None of these departments, none of the departments are paying for that other online, so at least not.
But thank you for allowing them to use yours, or whatever.
It's for everybody, we're all one big family.
That's right. Oh, happy family, remember?
That's right.
Happy family.
Happy, happy.
Okay, public comments? New, okay, minutes were, are unavailable, so.
But you have to sign last month's minutes.
Okay, we have last month's to sign, so we'll do that afterwards. So we'll move on to the additional appropriations. Mary Ann, you want to?
The first one is National Night Out, and they're wanting to pay for the big, bouncy fun house rentals, $8,000 that they had out there that night. The other one is the Sheriff's Department for Narcotic.
Incinerator?
Yeah.
That's a, it's a misname. It's a grant fund. Go ahead.
The firearms training, it's also the Sheriff's Department. It's to replace underlying 3,100 operating expense. That's all the letter says.
What are you doing with that one?
We can have the sheriff enlighten us on that.
Let me see.
I don't know.
The firearms training?
It'd be.
It's $10,000. It's $10,000.
How much?
$10,000.
$10,000 for fun, for firearm training to, and placed into the operating supply.
We got new shotguns, that's the price someone bought?
Okay.
The next one is the one that Stephanie just talked about, the $15,000. And then the next one is one that Cindy Todd had asked for, it's from the ARP grant, and it's early childhood, it's daycare for, at the schools.
If I have me talk about, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, that's the program, they started a launch program for trying to provide more child care, not just babysitting, but actual, there's a scale of this thing, it's from one to four, of just babysitting versus up to education, and this is an opportunity now at, where the Head Start is, that, I don't know if that's Baptist Church, wherever that church is across the street from you.
Used to be.
It's the Baptist Church. So Head Start is there now, and they've got some rooms that have come available that they can set up to, to use for extra space, I think 32 new spots, and we actually need about 300 spots in Park County, but this would be 32 more spots for this, this high, high-level childcare, and they'll be filled immediately, and they'll be able to hire people to fill those spots then as well, and it's always, that's year-round, not just school year stuff. So the foundation had money for a fund, and they donated $50,000, up to $50,000 available, 52 that they had for the, for that process of making those rooms available and getting that program expanded, and the commissioners decided to use $50,000 also of our funds to do the same thing. And it's not just, you know, we've had that discussion, it's not providing free childcare for anybody, it's providing educatable childcare, high-level childcare. We have about 394 spots, we're about 394 spots short of filling the need we have in the county. This is 32 more, book down that path, heading down that way.
So what happens once the money, you know, the money, the foundation money will run out, and then obviously, this is a one-time from the arc?
This is one-time unless.
So then does it, then, how does it sustain itself beyond?
Just like it is now, fees, fees for childcare.
So there'll be, so it's not free, then?
No, it's not free at all, no, no. In fact, it's very expensive, so. I'm amazed when that meeting, I don't know why there's childcare here, and I'm just amazed what families have to pay for childcare, just the number, amazing, we're talking hundreds of dollars a month for childcare.
Well, it is expensive.
It is. So this is not to subsidize any of that whatsoever, it's to make the facility available.
So it's really to work on the facility, really, is what we're really doing with it? It's not so much the subsidizing thing?
We're not subsidizing anybody getting childcare.
Uh-huh. It's just a.
And it's only, right now, this is just a grant match. If they don't get the grants, then it doesn't happen.
Absolutely, absolutely. So they get it, it's available to them if they need it for a match.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we, and I'm going to say it, because we've talked about this a little bit, that, and I think it's now maybe re-understood, that all this art money has to be appropriated, which is the point of these appropriations that we've, that come forward when, when something happens, so.
And we're fine with your, you know, we all want to work it together, so.
That's right, and we're just.
And you know, and I hear stories from other commissioners about councils and commissioners fighting over that stuff. I just don't understand. That's why, that's why we include you guys on the art committee. We're all just together, it's not my money, it's our money, we've got to spend it wisely, unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
It's going to run out. Unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately, it's going to run out. I just had a call. Well, there is a, it's a.
Yeah, you had a weird, awkward silence right there, Jim, that didn't work out for you.
I had a conversation with Duke Bennett at the last meeting we had the other night, Cameron was there, and they're, they're actually looking for spots to spend their on. They got $36 million to spend on their money, $36 million. He said it like Christmas. I said, "We got a Christmas gift," but it was pretty small compared to that $36 million. $36 million bucks here, do what you want to do.
Okay, so is there any other questions about the conditionals from the council?
I think one thing we missed on the narcotics incinerator is that was to pay for the SRO, SRO course for some of the school resource officers, at least that's what's labeled here, so I think that's important that that gets said.
Now, sometimes the titles or the headings aren't quite what it really is, but, okay. Do we have a motion for those?
Second.
Most have been made in second to approve the conditionals, all in favor?
By nine.
opposed. Okay, no re-appropriations, pay the jury.
I'm making a motion to pay the jury.
Most have been made in second to pay the jury, all in favor?
I don't know.
In your packet, you have a cash flow statement from the auditor's office for the end, until the end of June, period ending June 30th. Your information, monthly reports, redevelopment?
Redevelopment did meet, and we considered and approved a revolving loan request for the store over here on the east side of Score Bloomfields. This grant, or this loan, it's not a grant, it's a loan, revolving loan fund, will be used to replace the windows in that building, they are decrepit, so we did approve that for the four-year payback.
And he did buy the building?
He bought the building, he bought the building, owns the building, has done a lot of work to it, as you can tell already, it's been painted up, and the second story of that building is in pretty bad shape from the windows and the roof and so on, and done a lot of, spent a lot of money in it on plumbing and electrical work and so on, so there's been a pretty big investment on the owner's part himself already, and a loan, commercial, private loan for the purchase of the building, so that's, if nothing else, we're going to get windows out of it, and that's, needs to be done to salvage that building and his, his facility. We did find out afterwards, we had received last year, or awarded, a up to $100,000 grant to that revolving loan fund to be drawn out, so if we awarded a grant, and this is one of the cases of that, that you would draw out of that amount of grant from the federal USDA, and that was to expire at the end of June. We did find out Cindy went to work and got an extension for one more year for that, so there's still, there's still roughly $50,000 left that we had not awarded in any, in any capacity, so that's a good thing, because that allows us to, the pay, those that are paying in builds the fund, and we can pull the new money out of the, out of the grant, we have one more year to try to get that all awarded, so, and that, that's pretty much extent of it.
Okay, back to you, Plaid Commission?
Yeah, we just had one order of business. We turned down a cell phone request for, that's the road runs from Bloomingdale to West Union. They were trying to put it right in about six houses backyard, and, I mean, in their backyard, so, told them that we weren't opposed to sell towers, just the placement, and this guy was just a real estate man, he didn't care where he stuck, as long as he got one stuck, and we turned that down, so we'll have to reapply when he found a better location. That's all we have.
Solid waste?
We didn't meet, the next meeting's July 26th, so it's coming up.
Coming up, okay. All right, new business, we already dealt with the art business, we dealt with that, didn't we? So Roy's got some budget items. Budget is, is coming there, going to be starting August 17th at 8:30 here, so, I thought you talked about that, and then also, we've normally hired Roy some help on the budget, so we need permission from you all to do that. He's normally, pretty much done the lead on the budget, and he needs some help to enter data, other things that he needs done, so we need your permission to do that.
I'm making a motion to do that.
Okay. Most have been made in second, all in favor? Okay.
Well, they want to hire me for that task.
There you go.
All right.
It's up to Roy to hire who he wants.
August 17th, 8:30 here?
August 17th, 8:30 here.
Yes.
And we'll be sending out a schedule, of course, we'll have another regular meeting before that, and that's something, we need to probably send me that schedule prior to sending it out, because I like to edit it, and so, send it to me, and then when I am fine with it, why don't you send it out to the department heads?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And the sooner we can get that done, the better, so that they can all start planning. Some have talked to me, and I've told them that would be the date. Today, Mary Ann and I will meet with the DLGF rep regarding the budget preparation. It's a normal, normal process that happens at every, pretty much every, you know, the government goes through. We are in a, we are one of the very, very first ones in a, some testing deal of some new application, so I don't exactly know what we're getting ourselves into with it, but we do that this afternoon. Everything from the Department of Local Government Finance is late. They're statutorily required to provide the growth quotient by the end of June, that's not come out. They have not provided the miscellaneous revenue estimates, they've not provided the property tax cap estimates or anything else, so at this point, kind of stuck in the water, and it's kind of interesting that we're meeting about the budget, which in reality, we could have her then compose a lot of the budget, and we're meeting about that today, but don't have anywhere near enough information to actually do it. Gateway system, that's the state's online system for the budget, has about as far as we can go. A lot of the forms are prepared, I've done the first round of revenue estimates, but I can't do any of the real revenue estimates until I get some of the information from them. We also just spoke of the August 17th hearing date will be in here. The adoption date is right now targeted for September 14th, that'd be our normal September meeting, so we'll aim to adopt then. That will give us, if something were to change, after that, we can readopt in October still. We like to try to get it adopted in September, if at all possible, and right now, we can still beat that deadline, as long as they don't drag their feet too terribly much longer. And yesterday, I met with the judge and the chief public defender regarding their budget, and we know that I've had some consternation with what they had submitted a number of times. They resubmitted it three times. Along and the shore of the matter is, is that their budget estimate for '24 is actually slightly lower than '23, but the county percentages changed due to the caseloads, and we have a larger share of it. They already expect that that will revert back closer to what it started with next year because of, there had been an anomaly in one quarter in Burmeyan County where they had had a relatively low caseload, and Park County had a relatively high caseload, which was an unexplained, other than maybe the possibility that the judge had resigned over there. So that dealt with that, and another thing, just for the information here. So that dealt with that. And another thing, just for the information here, uh, any money left in what is sent over there during the year, anything that's left, uh, is distributed back to the counties in whatever percentage they contributed and they do expect to have money left. So we will see some money come back. And all the reimbursement money, the forty percent reimbursement is going back directly to the county. So uh, it's not as bad as I actually believed in my own mind of how much we were on the hook for here. It's much better than that. So he will be here that day to present, or to talk at the budget hearings as well. So that's all I have about the budget. If any questions, I'd answer.
I have a question about it. Do the various departments have some kind of clue about what's potentially available for budget increases? Because I see everything from almost nothing to ten, twelve percent increase.
And everywhere in between.
Yeah.
Well, we composed, we composed a letter that went out with their budget forms. They give some guidelines on what the expectations would be. And probably some of them can answer them, some of that better than, than I can on this. But, uh, this year I did give, uh, some benchmarks with particularly part-time salary rates and stuff to calculate because they use an hourly, you know, how many hours this person's working a week and so on and so forth. And then you, it's a relatively simple math. Uh, but as far as giving guidelines on, on the rest of it, no, we really don't. But you, having done it a few times now, you know what, I can pretty much tell you what somebody's going to come in with. Most of them requested, and rightfully so, request an increase in postage. Because postage rates have gone up, most of them increased, or requested an increase in travel because we increased the mileage rate um, at the beginning of the year. So they knew that going in and we had said at that point that we were going to set it for the year and go on so they can justify some of that. But no, no, otherwise we don't really give them any, because I, at the time when we're asking for this, we have no, no forecast of revenue.
I must say, most of them are really reasonable in their request. They're doing a job.
Well, of course, we always advertise high, as you well know, and then that way we, of course, if we don't advertise high enough, then that's a problem.
Well, you know, I see things just like, well, in fact, this letter from the sheriff, it talks about how much lower, you know, Park County is compared to everybody else. Now is, now is there a particular reason why that's the case? You know, through the years, is it, you know, the God had the revenue, you know, to provide the increases or we spend money on other things other than, you know, like the salaries, you know, to be, to at least be comparable to others? So, I mean, why do the other counties have the money to do those things and we don't?
That's a difficult question to answer from my seat, but I can, I'm going to try to answer it a little bit from the perspective of my history of working on this budget. Um, when I first started, uh, getting involved with the budget, which would, I, I was really involved my first year, but I, that was more on the periphery. John and Pam and Diana did the lines, almost all of that one. The next one, I got far more involved with. I can certainly recall her and Diana spending more hours than I would care to try to tally up about the time we were doing this budget hearing to try to figure out how to get that, that whole thing to, to come together. We were adopting budgets in the first couple, three years of my term that were on the ragged edge of an actual reserve. Um, so when, as you well know, having done a bunch of these from the school side, you know, you, you go through this exercise and you fill out the four Bs and you, you run it on your projected revenues and you have what is, you know, that, that last line, which is what your reserve going to be. And we were, uh, on a, on a budget in the general fund of, of say, four million dollars. We were adopting that at, at, you know, a reserve, you know, less than six figures. You know, so less than a hundred thousand dollar reserve on a four million dollar fund. And still giving at that point, giving increases, there've been an increase done every year I've been on this council. But they were five hundred, five hundred thousand dollar increases at most. And when you go back and look, as we went through this a few years ago, when you go back and look at what we were doing for the years well before me and even in the time that I started up to that point, we were keeping up with inflation. Now it doesn't seem like it and I, I realize that's probably a very controversial statement, but math will tell you that we kept up with it. We just certainly didn't exceed it though. I will not make any question about that. But we were adopting budgets, just barely getting by. We have gotten better about that from a lot of different reasons. And therefore, the last couple of years, and there has been a lot of work done with regarding that letter. And he mentions it in there. With the longevity bonuses and the training stipends and overtime for the jailers and the dispatchers that has made some big dents in that. I can't answer why now that we, we were moving forward and I felt like we were really making up some progress here at points. And then in the last year or two, everybody else blew it up. There's a lot, I know that doesn't really answer all the question by any stretch of imagination because I don't exactly know how to answer it. It's, uh, we have fallen behind even with everything that we have done. There's a couple of those positions that, I'm going to pick on the jailers and the dispatchers myself at this point. They have had a very, very significant increase in the last couple of years. And I think the sheriff would agree with that. When I met with the prior sheriff regarding some of them, uh, this was right before COVID. It was like February and that all fell apart in March. He had informed me of, of how that, you know, it used to be that they pulled people over from the prison and now there was no way that was happening. And we took a big jump that year in those positions and added those training stipends for, for the deputies. And then last year, up, up the longevity bonuses even more and added overtime for the jailers and the dispatchers. Um, because they're confined there and it's hard to s- So there comes a point where there is, as you well know, only so much.
So with everything that's being done, we're getting further behind. I mean, that's kind of what it looks like.
Well, when the governor pushing, pushing through the legislature, starting salary for state police at seventy, over seventy thousand dollars, yeah, you're getting behind.
That's what I guess the question is, is there anything as a county can do, I mean, to help solve some of these problems?
Increase some tax base around here, be good.
Keep pushing more in, or, you know, we keep pushing it to the edge. I mean, that's, I guess.
And you see how much industry's moved into Park County lately. So the tax base.
Take a look at Vermillion County compared to Park County as far as parcels. We are almost identical in parcel count. But you take a look at the initial tax base, there is a huge disparity between Vermillion and Park.
And that goes back to nineteen eighty-four. When they froze.
When the freeze went in, I mean, we were probably kind of there. And then of course, we just face, you know, the property taxes are only going to go up only just what the, the growth, growth quotient.
As you well know, the growth quotient's done in a percentage, right? So if you started a smaller, smaller levy, that percentage increase is less, right? So their property tax rates across the river are three times what they are here. Which, I don't know what the difference is in the assessed value, but, uh, their levy is significantly, maybe double, if not more than double ours. So five percent assessed value growth quotient over there is twice the money in new revenue than it is here.
And in twenty-four and twenty-five, the state just mandated that they are going to limit the growth quotient statewide. It cannot increase by more than four percent, period. So we're, for twenty-four and twenty-five, it's going to be a little tougher in Park County. So.
Which is why this county is so, or so dependent at this point on, on the income tax is that that's how prior councils and even up in my, and now that we've all tried to overcome that. Excuse me, with the income tax.
So, so really the only solution is cut expenses.
You kept spending in other places and, you know, use, use all your resources wisely. And when you asked the question about when somebody asked, you know, so we, we scrutinize. And I, I mean, they may not all come out in, in budget hearings, but you know, every request for postage or travel or, or office supplies or whatever is scrutinized by me as I'm working that thing through that. And, and nobody gets an increase in it without, without, you know, a direct question about it. And every little hundred dollar change here and there is money that can be used for something else. And shift as much as, sorry, I interrupted again. Uh, you know, and shift is, the other thing that we try to, we've really put a big focus on is shifting as much of this stuff as we can to other funds that are paid for by some user fee of some sort. So pretty much every department in here has at least one of them. Uh, you know, Katie has a sales disclosure fund. So when you go in and file a sales disclosure, you pay a fee and that money goes into there and she uses it to buy things for her office that would have come out of the general fund, right? Mary Ann's office has one and then the plat book fund is another one. And we have over years maybe taken salary out of that line for, or out of that fund for a year or two, which is why you start juggling this around, keep, you know, build some reserve, prepare for the, for a bad time and be able to start doing things that, like you're talking about here.
COVID hit, we did have some reserve. That's good though.
Well, and the other thing I would add to all of that, of course, we have a huge health, do you have any idea on the health insurance at this point? The health insurance is huge here. I mean, it's a pretty nice policy, but it's expensive. The other thing I would add that, you know, we are relying a lot more on income taxes than we ever have. Is it more than a third or half?
It's more than a third now.
More than a third of that budget. So we all know when, you know, there's, there's a recession going to come sometime. I don't know when it is, maybe next year, maybe the next five years. I don't know. But one of the things I always preach is you've got to be prepared for those because that means less money coming in. And we don't want to be one of those counties that has to start talking layoffs and all of that because it turns into a game. But you know, we have to be prepared for those things down the road because boy, when people don't have jobs and aren't making money, why, it really hits this budget when you rely so heavily on the income taxes. Just, now, right now, things are good. Income taxes are up and I mean, I preach, you know, build some reserve because we know somewhere, sometime, there'll be a downturn and it'll hit the budget some and we need to be prepared for that. But yeah, there is no good answer to like, we can't, Jim Ron always used to say, we can't borrow ourselves out of, you know, out of that. So.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's what it appears to be. It's, uh, the county's in just a really difficult situation here and, you know, and they have employees that are saying, well, you know, everybody else around us is making so much more, but we might not have a solution for it.
Well, up until two thousand eighteen, Park County had consistently been the third lowest paid county in the state of Indiana. I haven't watched the fact books since two thousand eighteen, but all the way up to two thousand eighteen, December thirty-first, Park County is the third lowest paid county in the state of Indiana. Martin County and Union County are the only two that were lower. And Union County's the state.
It's a tough call.
Oh, and it's, it's not, certainly not lost on the fact that there's ground that has to be made up at this point. But we did and JB tried. There was no cuts at COVID time. There were plenty of, that, that, that next, that budget during that year, you know, we gave, we gave raises and decent raises where there were many counties around that, no, 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 gave nothing. They had nothing to give. We still built a little dab of reserve then, not by much.
So then I wonder, the things like the, all the state parks, you know, with all the property and so forth, I mean, you don't have a tax base.
Absolutely.
So we got a lot of area that we can't gain anything.
You're absolutely right. And every acre that the state buys along the river or whatever else is more money, more acres coming out of the tax base.
Buy more that up and then there's no, comes off the tax roll.
We need to charge the state property tax.
Just, just to throw in Tom, I've talked with Dean R. many times on this. Bob Ronson, we spent a long time talking about this. Dean R. is more than willing to pay P I L T, payment loop taxes. But they insist that it's not done on property value. They don't want to get into where, um, a park and acre in Marion County is worth more than a park acre in Park County is, we're going to pay a different rate to them. They're willing to pay so much per acre fee, but the state legislature won't let them do that. They told them, no, they won't do it.
Another thing to think about, and Roy and I have talked about this, but there was a little caveat, I guess I was not, and maybe Roy was aware of. Um, I just went to a seminar and we're going to have our assessors conference the week of August twenty-first. Um, the whole thing with that homestead, Senate Bill three twenty-five. What's going to go into the one percent? I don't think that's going to really hurt us. But what's going to hurt us is any extra residential, um, parcel. Let's say you have five acres. You get one acre for your homestead. That other four acres, they have now decided to take it from the three percent cap to the two percent cap. So there, there may be, and I don't think it's going to be substantial, but there will be some shifts there that's going to have to be thought about.
You know, the property tax cap in this county hasn't really hurt us too much. Last year, in, in this current year budget, uh, that number is in the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollar range. Of the, the whole, and that's not just the one, two, three percent. That's the over sixty-five, the veterans, the whole ninety yards, all of it. That much. It's a million dollars over there. And, you know, it's, so when we talked a little bit, you know, we just talked about the rates and, and AVs and so on and so forth. They're losing a lot of money on the cap across the river and a lot of, and so when, like Pam said, and she's right, the legislature's capped the, uh, the growth quotient for next year. Well, they've, they've painted, they painted themselves in a heck of a corner with an amendment to the constitution with tax caps. Because the only way around that when it comes to dealing with inflation and local government spending is, is basically two ways. You've got to grow that assessed value to beat that thing, right? Or you've got to go somewhere else to get your revenue. So everybody else has started to adopt income taxes, right? We were doing it because our levy was so low here. This is well before all that. They now are, they over there have, have caught up with a lot of that. Other counties that are losing their behinds on this tax cap are doing the same thing. And now the legislature, to fix a problem in, in some areas, has said, okay, now you don't get a growth, as much growth as you would have. They're capping you off at that because we're going to fix the property tax bills with that. When, now, what exactly did anybody expect to happen when you capped the rates? What did they expect to happen? The assessed value, and you put the assessed value on market and ninety percent of people wouldn't sell their property for what it's assessed for. And now you're going to fix that by capping that. And now you're going to have yourself painted in a heck of a corner here. And, and I for one am a huge advocate of having this reserve under control for when, because that, that will, that will blow up and then there'll be a fix to it, but there's going to be a window in there where things could get pretty nasty. People have been around this a while. Remember that, and you would remember that from, from the mid-two thousands.
Then one last question that I'll, uh, just like with the sheriff's letter, you know, the amounts. Is it, you know, the base salary for the sheriff's department, the, the debt pieces, you know, X number of dollars? And then there's things added on to it. So in the comparisons with other counties, are those other things included or additional? Or are we?
How would you know?
Are we comparing apples to apples?
Yeah, that's, that's the problem we always run into with that. And I don't mean to belittle anybody at all with this statement, but it, it's really hard to compare apples to apples with it. Yeah, I, I have made plenty of attempts at that myself for my own understanding and trying to compare, uh, anyone, all right, whether it's, it's them, her, or his people, or any of them, on trying to get an apples to apples comparison. I've railed in here. Jim's tired of hearing me rail about the cost of insurance, right? If we could get the cost of insurance in line with somewhere, something comparable. So say, say that the cost of insurance was the cost of what it is to the school trust. You could take the difference in that, in a salary increase and all of a sudden, everybody is well in line at that point. Now, is that the only end all be? No, no, no. That's not what I'm trying to say with that. But if you get into comparing this, so you talk about the salary. Well, how much are they paying for their insurance? Are they a seventy, thirty county? Over here, it's eighty-four, sixteen? I mean, it's, it's a very, very difficult thing to do. I mean, it's a very, very difficult thing to do.
The longevity bonuses.
Longevity bonuses, and all these other things going there. And none of that stuff shows up in what they, what anybody's base salary says. And if that census is filled out, and if I go look at that, a lot of times, I can match it to the budget from this county, and none of the rest of that's there. Now, how some other auditor, or some other person in another county filled that out? I can't answer that. It's a very tough thing to do. But there are some that it's glaringly obvious. There's no argument there.
Well, we will take up a lot of that when we get ready to do budget in August. Anything else? I know we have to sign, Mary Ann, we have minutes to sign, you have something else?
One more thing. We have, some, Mary Ann just brought up to me before the meeting again, we have to got, somebody has got to settle this union hospital security issue. It's still going on, there's still not money being paid in for the pension. There's two payrolls being done now because of it, evidently. I'm, kind of pass that off to those that need to make that decision, but Stephanie has, you know, chimed in a few times, but there has to be something dealt with on that soon, because the more and more that goes, the deeper and deeper that pension hole's gonna get. So that's just a statement.
But I don't know, we'll have to figure that out or something. I mean, it's.
Last fire from Stephanie, I thought it was fixed. I thought that they had it settled, that every dime was paid for by then.
They're not paying 32% for that pension, and they've said clearly they won't. And I, I mean, you're not receiving 32% for the pension, right?
And because of that, she's having to process a special payroll for those deputies every time they work, so that those pension amounts aren't being withheld until we figure out what's going on.
And the 3% that they were paying, they're not even paying back now.
Okay, see.
Lady, I'm getting all the information, and Fub's told that was just all fixed, and I thought you guys would come to this agreement.
As far as Union is concerned, it is fixed, because we're footing the bill.
And that's, I'm not pointing fingers anywhere, I'm just saying that we have got to get that solved. That's been sitting out there too long now.
Stephanie come in, and whoever else has come with her, to you guys, and I will be here, I'll be here too. And we just need to get it settled one day, either it gets fixed or doesn't.
Well, it's not, we didn't sign the agreement, so I'm in the position that it's not the council's decision. I'm just making the recommendation, something's gotta be done with it. All we have said is that if this is going to happen, you gotta cover those intangible them costs.
And what I was led to believe was that it was.
And at this point, it's still on. So I know the sheriff has worked with her too, you've had conversations about paying less, and then you get into wage an hour and all that. That's above my pay grade and my level of understanding, so somebody's gotta figure that one out. I'm sorry, it's just gotta happen.
Good. Anything else?
I have. Jason, this, you requested for a vehicle for next year?
Yeah.
Can we get any grants for that? I know Justin used to.
We did the USDA grant every year, and I'm surprised we can't do that again.
Okay, thank you.
30%, I think.
You answered my question.
Good. All right.
Don't go until you sign them.
Yeah, we won't go, but.
We'll go.
All right, thank you.